I wear that.
There we are. So, welcome everybody to the Calaveras County Planning Commission Regular Meeting of September 22nd, and I believe the first day of fall. So, let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any staff announcements this morning?
Yes. Oh yeah, here it is. Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to introduce some new members of our planning staff. Mr. John Duncan Franklin has been with us since, when last year?
January.
Since January of this year. John is one of our Planner One planners. You might be seeing him coming in front of you shortly, hopefully. Is anything you'd like to say to the commission, John?
I've seen a few of you around. It's nice to finally get to meet all of you.
Right. John went to high school locally, right?
I went to Calaveras High School. I then attended San Joaquin Delta College for a few years, where I ultimately went to graduate at CSU Stanislas.
So, welcome to the Planning Commission.
And our next planner, whom I think, I don't know if you've seen or met her, is Jaclyn Taylor. Jaclyn is also a Planner One. She joined us less than a month ago. Do you introduce yourself, Jaclyn, to the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I'm Jaclyn Taylor. I was previously helping a little bit with the Housing Department with Lee Kimball. It was kind of through a whole Civic Spark Program thing, and now I'm an official employee, which is pretty great. I like it so far.
And you went to school where again?
Humboldt State. They've changed it to Cal Poly Humboldt now.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
By the way, I don't think that microphone's turned on.
Yeah. I was gonna say, any chance we can turn it up at all? Okay. So... Should we dance?
Been trying to turn it off.
Sorry, sorry. We're enjoying the music.
I know, but it's like when I need my teenager, you know?
Good morning, Cory. And do we have any agenda changes?
None, Madam Chair.
Perfect. Then, we will offer this opportunity to the public to speak on any item of interest to the Planning Commission that is not on the agenda today. Annette, do we have anybody online?
No online public comments.
Thank you. And I assume everybody in the audience is here for a specific agenda item. Thank you. Then we will close the public comment portion of this hearing. And move on to the consent agenda, which consists only of the Planning Commission meeting minutes from August 25th. Is there any member of the commission or the public who would like to remove this item from the consent agenda for discussion? Seeing none, are there... Does any member of the commission have any comments or corrections to the minutes?
Yes. On page two, at the top of the page, under Action Item...
Yes.
Starts, "Determine whether a biosolids facility," should be a comma after "facility," "which produces compost and fertilizer as an end product through the use of biosolids and other bulking agents facility." The last facility should be deleted.
Should be what?
Deleted.
That's a facility comes up.
Yeah.
That's it?
Yep. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move we adopt the consent agenda?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes 5-0. And we are on to our regular agenda, beginning with Item 1, 2022-019, "Conditional Use Permit and Plan Development Permit for the Mark Twain Healthcare District." And Catherine?
Good morning. How are you?
Good.
Great. Today, I am presenting the Conditional Use Permit and Plan Development Permit for an electric sign. The applicant is requesting approval of the CUP and PD permits to install a 38.6 square foot LED sign on an existing medical clinic located at 51 Wellness Way in Valley Springs. The clinic was constructed in 2019 with the approval of PD... with the approval of PD permit 2015-048 and a subsequent modification, PD permit 2018-018. APN 073-049-013 is a 2.42 acre parcel, Zone General Commercial, with a plan development combining district and an off-site parking combining district. It has a commercial land use designation and is located within the Valley Springs Community Plan area. Chapter 17.72.100.D prohibits exterior animated or blinking signs, such as an LED sign unless a conditional use permit has been granted by the Planning Commission. The purpose of the CUP is to provide the general public with an opportunity to review the proposed use. And the purpose of the PD permit is to review any project that has an effect on aesthetics. The proposed sign is compatible with the commercial land use designation, which is intended for commercial or office uses. This sign will be an accessory used to the existing medical clinic. And... I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. The subject parcel is located within the Valley Springs community area, and the Valley Springs Community Plan Policy 1.7 encourages commercial signs to be consistent with the rural community character. Although this is an animated sign, it will be placed a little further back so it won't stand out. It's mounted on the side of the clinic, away from the right-of-way, and will not be obstructing any scenery or views. Policy 3.5 encourages the development of additional health services in the Valley Springs area, including medical clinics, which can serve residents' routine healthcare needs. The applicant has stated that the purpose of the sign is to provide health messaging about disease prevention, health education, and resources, and messaging about public health and safety, which will better inform the community about services that are available to them. And I mentioned the applicant's stated intent in relation to that community plan policy, but I would like to note that we don't have the authority to regulate the content of signs. Surrounding zoning and land uses consist of developed commercial businesses, including several restaurants, a mini-mart with gas pumps, a dental office, and then several vacant commercial parcels. So, it's a heavily commercial area. The project complies with all applicable PD performance standards. The code requires an area equal to 10% of the gross disturbed land area to be planted with new landscaping. However, the sign will not be disturbing any land area, so no landscaping is required. In regard to design, the clinic is at the corner of Highway 26 and Vista Del Lago Drive, which is a four-way intersection with multiple traffic lights. Across Vista Del Lago to the east is a mobile sign, which electronically displays prices for the gas station. The proposed sign will be placed at the corner of the existing building, which, as I said, is set back from the right-of-way and is being mounted on a brick red background and will better blend in... will blend in better than if the facade was a lighter background. The signs present won't be physically imposing, as it's not a freestanding sign. It's not going to be right up against the right-of-way, and it will not be higher than the building. So, it won't create a substantially greater aesthetic impact than any of the existing features in the area. Proposed signs are... must meet all the requirements of Chapter 17.72, which this sign does. Animated signs are prohibited with the CUP, as I mentioned. And Chapter 17.72.100.2 allows for one square foot of sign area for each linear foot of construct... structure frontage, up to 200 square feet. So, the building frontage is 130 feet for the medical clinic, and they currently have 129 square feet of signage. They are proposing to remove a 39.21 square foot sign from the back of the clinic and replacing it with a 38.6 square foot sign. So, there is going to be a small net loss. So, they will be staying within the allowed signage. Then additionally, the lower parpet of the building is 24 feet tall, and the sign will be placed lower. Therefore, the sign is in conformance with the 25-foot height limit established by code. There was also a suggestion that I bring up the fact that 17.72.080 of the code states that illumination shall be shielded or directed so that the lighting does not shine or glare into traffic patterns within a parking lot, on a road, or onto adjoining property. This can be addressed with a condition to the resolution. Regarding refuge, storage, screening, and mechanical rooftop devices, the sign will not require any additional features for these, and they were addressed at the time of the original permit. The application was routed to the Public Works Department, who had no comment implying that the existing access is safe and adequate, and no additional parking will be required for the sign as the square footage of the actual building is not being expanded. The application was circulated to various county departments and local public agencies for 30 days. During that review period, response letters stating that no comments were received from the Caltrans Department, the California Department of Transportation, the Building Department, the Public Works Department, and the Consolidated Calaveras Fire Department. No other responses or comments were received. A notification of exemption under Section 15311A from the California Environmental Quality Act has been prepared and will be submitted for filing upon final approval of the permit. And in conclusion, the project as proposed conforms to applicable goals and policies of the County General Plan. The permitting process will allow for the... for the sign to be constructed while giving the opportunity to mitigate any impacts to neighbors through permit conditions. The project is found to be compatible with surrounding land use... land uses and zoning, and there's adequate land area to accommodate the proposed use, which was found to have safe and adequate access with no site improvements required. The permit has been conditioned as necessary for the protection of the public health, safety, and welfare, and to reduce or eliminate potential environmental impacts. Therefore, staff recommends approval of Project 2022-019.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Catherine?
No.
Would the applicant like to say anything?
Hello, good morning. I would like to thank Catherine and Gina. They've been really helpful to us in the building. When we built the clinic three years ago, it's... we're a rural health clinic, and that means that we help the underserved in our community, which, by the way, there's quite a few of them. So, what we're trying to do is put more messaging out there about good health, how to take care of themselves, what we can do to help them. Predominantly, our patients are medical. So, we feel like there's just a real need for education out there. We feel that this will be a really widely used by... I think the community would benefit greatly by it, in addition to us as the clinic. I'll answer any questions if anybody has any.
I'd just like to point out that it's nice you have a track record with the sign at the hospital here in San Andreas. Since we cannot regulate the content, and since you were assuring us that it's going to be public health-oriented and this sort of thing.
I guarantee it.
I feel confident in supporting you in this. If, however, we've been seeing Mickey Mouse and everything else on this sign in San Francisco and in San Andreas, I'd have my doubts.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to this item? Anybody online, Annette?
No public comment online.
Thank you. Okay, we will open and close the public comment portion on this item and bring it back to the commission. Any further discussion or comments on the resolution?
Yes. On page one, under the Be it Resolved heading, paragraph one, the second sentence says, "Based on the whole record, there is no substantial evidence that the project as designed could have a significant effect on the environment." But the evidence under that refers only to the fact that this is exempt under SEQA. And there will be a notice of exemption. So, the first sentence is fine. The project was processed consistent with the requirements of SEQA, California Public Resources Corp., 21,000, at SEC. But the second sentence is too hurtful, because there's no evidence to support it, and that's not the basis upon which the finding is made. That's one comment. The other one...
You'd eliminate that second.
I would eliminate the second sentence, because there's no... there's nothing to support it. It's not the basis for the finding. The second one is just basically a word change at the top of page three. The first full sentence reads, "The proposed sign will not create a substantially greater..."
What page number are you?
Page three.
At the top.
At the top, the first full sentence. I would simply change the two words, "substantial," "bigger," to "substantially greater." The only other thing I have to say about the resolution is, I'm satisfied that the removal of the 39.21 square foot sign need not be an express condition, because it's already covered by the language. It says, "The project has to be done in accordance with the exhibit, and the exhibit contains that requirement." So, that's my only comments on it.
Well, I would add to the conditions, the Planning 2-1. "The sign shall comply with Calaveras Code 17.72.080 regarding illuminated signs." That's the only suggestion I have.
My only response to that comment is, I think it's already covered by 1.4, which says, "The CUP and PD permit is subject to all applicable county regulations or plans, whether or not such requirements are specified as a condition of the project."
Maybe it's superfluous, but it's something that would be... if indeed the practices became different than they have been, it'd be good to have something specifically inherent to cover the illuminated signs provision.
Commissioner Chris Parker, any comments?
Madam Chair, I have a follow-up question to Commissioner Ladish. Could you reference that section again you were just talking about?
It's 17.72.080.
It's in the report.
Which provides that illumination shall be shielded or directed so that lighting does not shine or glare into traffic patterns within a parking lot, on a road, or onto adjoining property. And I don't disagree with Commissioner Wooster that it's basically covered, but I think when we're dealing with animated signs, it's a good thing to have that specific in there.
Thank you.
So, I only had the same two items, although my interpretation of the lighted sign requirement has to do with signs that have lights directed at them or up, not a sign that is a lighted, animated sign. And so, I felt that wasn't actually required. I don't have a problem with adding it, but I don't have any angst over this item at all.
Neither do I.
So, what is... Do the commissioners feel that a generic reference in the general conditions to conformance with the lighted sign section would be a prudent thing to do?
I personally don't oppose it, so long as it's not conflicting that they're aligned.
So, it sounds like nobody feels the need for that additional condition. Am I interpreting that correctly?
No, I said I don't mind it in there, so long as it's not conflicting with the overriding one.
So... I think, let's go ahead, Annette. It doesn't hurt anything. And then, given that, are we ready for the recommendation? Yes?
Staff recommends approval of Project 2022-019 for a Conditional Use Permit and Plan Development Permit to allow the installation of a 38.6 square foot LED sign on the side of an existing medical clinic at 51 Wellness Way in Valley Springs, APN 073-049-013, in the C2 PD PX Zone, with the amendments to the resolution.
Thank you. We have a motion.
I move we...
It was gonna be my first time. That's okay.
I'll take the second.
I move to... Yes, I move to move forward with the recommendation. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Passes 5-0. Thank you very much. And we are on to Item 2, 2022-024, "Zoning Amendment for Establishment of Agriculture Preserve and Williamson Act Contract 390 for Harold and Geraldine Hatler at All." And I'm guessing this is gonna be Gina. Yeah.
It's all mine.
Ms. Williamson Act.
I guess. I'm hoping to pass the baton. So, before I get started, I just wanna let you know and introduce to you our new deputy ag commissioner, in case you haven't already met, Carrie Bassett. She and I have been working really closely, looking over our 1975 resolution, and just kinda troubleshooting some things, looking at perhaps, trying to amend our process, simplify it a little. She and I have been, you know, discussing this for a little bit of time now. Hopefully, next year, the process will be a little bit different for you, rather than trying to consider, you know, a zoning amendment for the assumption that Williamson Act contract will be established by the board. We may be taking those forward to the board separately under Carrie's, you know, expertise and guidance, and then perhaps maybe addressing the zoning subsequent to the establishment. But those are things that we're trying to work out, just trying to simplify the process and make it a little less onerous for everyone. So, with that, today, we're asking you to consider whether the land noted in the next two applications qualifies to be zoned ag preserve for the purpose of establishing an agriculture preserve and a Williamson Act contract. So, as you've already seen, I've prepared two reports outlining how each application is eligible for an ag preserve for purposes of establishing a Williamson Act contract. In addition, the reports must show appropriate findings for compatibility with the general plan, zoning code, and other applicable regulations that are appropriate to zone the land ag preserve. So, the next information we're gonna talk about really applies to both applications for Hatler as well as Cassick. And just to let you know, this is the first two of four for this year. Kind of a light year compared to previous, but that's okay. We're getting it done. So, the properties are both designated by the County General Plan as resource production, which, as you know, identifies lands capable and primarily used for agricultural operations, including lands of conservation easements. The ag preserve zone is applied to lands for which a Williamson Act contract has been executed, and the ag preserve zone is consistent with the resource production land use designation in the general plan. This area, or I should say, these areas of the county are noted as being in very high fire hazard areas of the county. As we all understand, grazing livestock will help reduce that vegetation. The area is also under best management practices, managing brush, eliminating invasive plant species, developing water systems, all helps to decrease water fuels... or I should say, fire fuels, sorry. Restricting the land in agriculture reduces the land development potential, which will minimize the exposure of people and structures to the risk of wildfires. All of those are just a win-win. As we all know, wildlife is abundant in Calaveras County, which some of those happen to be protected species by the state and federal government. Policies of the conservation and open space element of the general plan encourage open space for the preservation of natural resources, such as wildlife habitat, in addition to the management... managed production of resources, including forest, rangeland, and ag land. The areas surrounding these properties are mostly resource production designated lands and also zoned for intense commercial agricultural operations. There are thousands of acres specifically being utilized to graze livestock in these parts of the county. Zoning this property ag preserve is consistent with the surrounding zoning and the land use as currently in place. There are thousands of acres specifically being utilized to graze livestock in these parts of the county. Zoning this property ag preserve is consistent with the surrounding zoning and the land use as currently in place. On August 24th, the Board-appointed Agriculture Advisory Committee meeting, Committee met, taking under consideration the California Land Conservation Application from each one of these individuals, in addition to information provided by my department. They're, they have a vote unanimously to recommend the Board of Supervisors establish both of these contracts. So in particular to Hatler, again, this is a zoning amendment 2022-24 for the Hatler family. This comes to us as a result of the filing of a California Land Conservation Contract Application 390. They're proposing to place 280 acres comprised of two assessor parcels into the preserve. The property is located approximately seven and a half miles west of Copperopolis, and is adjacent to the 707 acres that we entered into contract last year under 381. This property has been in ag production for many years. Previously, the Hatler family ran livestock on this ranch. Currently, the lot, the land is leased by Rex Whittle, who also leases the adjacent 707 acres. The ag operation consists of 85 head of beef cattle. For purposes of this application, about 16 head generate a gross annual income of $8,320. Scott Onetto, our Calvers County Farm Advisor, conducted a feasibility study indicating the land can produce a gross annual income of $29.70 per acre annually. Both of these calculate out to exceed the minimum requirement set forth in Resolution 75489, which is a minimum of $2,000 annual, gross annual production. Being that the land is a total of 1,000, oops. Nope. That's another application. Being that the land is a total of 280 acres and comprised of a 160-acre and 120-acre parcel, the property meets the minimum requirements of 100 acres for the preserve and the Williamson Act contract, and 50-acre requirement for the ag preserve zoning. In conclusion, staff finds this proposal is consistent with the goals and policies set forth in the County General Plan. Additionally, the California Land Conservation Contract Application and zoning amendment meet the minimum requirements set forth in Board Resolution 75489, in addition to Chapter 17.18 of the zoning code. Any questions?
I wanna make sure I've got this straight. All we're, all we're doing today is recommending the rezoning of this parcel to ag preserve AP.
Yes.
But then the Board can take this recommendation, or not. If it does, then it designates an agricultural preserve that would be the combined acreage.
Correct.
And then enters into a Williamson Act contract?
Yes.
Or simultaneously.
Yes, yes. It's kinda backwards. And now, and now the old process actually kinda makes more sense, and that's why Carrie and I have had some recent discussions about maybe kinda going back to where we were before with respect to actually establishing a Williamson Act contract first, and then coming back on the heels of that with the zoning of the properties. This process was put into place when the Planning Department was asked to process the California Land Conservation Contract Applications back in 2014. We thought it would be a more expedited process to kinda run them concurrently, but when it comes right down to it, the Planning Commission is only considering the zoning for the property and is not required to consider the actual contract, but in fact, they kinda go hand in hand. So if you understand that the property has, you know, is eligible for a contract, meaning that it meets all of our minimum requirements, then I think it makes your recommendation a lot easier to the Board in terms of the zoning.
Yeah, and that, one thing that confused me for quite a while was that the Board actually establishes an agricultural preserve.
Yes.
That's separate from the AP zoning that we're...
We've all, we've all been confused, but I think we're getting our nail down.
Yeah, I think the only thing to keep in mind is that you, a Williamson Act contract cannot be, you can have an ag preserve with a variety of parcels in it that don't have to be under contract. Some can be in, some can be out. And there's a process for, in the state law, for adopting an agricultural preserve that is much more complicated than actually just entering into the contract. And so you, as long as you have a qualifying parcel that's in an ag preserve, you can be in contract or not in contract. The rezone does have to happen, but the zoning regulations for an AP zone don't have to be as restrictive as the actual contract. And so that's, that's sort of where, that's where we are. But you can't, you can't do, I don't know if you were saying, Gina, we can't do, enter into a Williamson Act contract on property that is not already in a preserve.
Yes, that's how government code lays it out. However, our...
Chicken or the egg?
Chicken or the egg, right? So our resolution from 1975 actually calls out ag preserves and Williamson Act contract as concurrent applications, being basically one of the same. And I think for a long time, until we actually dug deep into government code, didn't quite understand the separation because of our resolution and our county's choice to call them one of the same. So those are things that we're trying to work through, you know, hopefully, we can, you know, come to some consensus and simplify the process for everyone, just to keep things moving forward, but we're working on it.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Gina? Would the applicant like to speak?
I don't think they're here.
Okay. Then we'll, is there any member of the public present or online who would like to speak to this item?
No online public comment.
Thank you. Then we will open and close the public comment portion, and we're ready to take a look at the resolution, I believe.
Yeah, so I gave you an amended resolution. We found a spelling error. Darn typos.
And the closed quotes.
And the closed quotes. Nothing earth-shattering, but it certainly cleans it up. It's, it's nice to know that you're spelling, spelling the word Williamson correctly. And let's see, we also added on this resolution, down under the evidence of finding two, we had a suggestion to add a word down towards the, I guess it would be, second sentence from the bottom, communatively and separately, the 280 acres meets the minimum 100 requirement, acre requirement to be eligible for the agriculture preserve and Williamson Act contract. And then, subsequent to that amendment, I had another suggestion that didn't get rolled into that, so I have something separate that actually I did not present to you. So on that same sentence, now we've also included the, tacked on the additional, and each parcel is over 50 acres in size, making the parcels eligible for the ag preserve zone.
Perfect.
You're just depriving us of all chances of coming.
I know, that's good.
Has anybody found anything else they think needs attention in the resolution? Then we are ready for the recommendation?
Is it separately on each one?
Yes, 'cause we haven't spoken of the other one yet.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and dive into Cassick on the next.
So on Hatler.
So for Hatler, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2022-010, recommending the Board of Supervisors adopt an ordinance amending the zoning of APN 050-033-012 and 050-033-013 from General Agriculture A1 to Agriculture Preserve AP for Harold V. and Geraldine A. Hatler et al., upon board approval to establish ag preserve contract and Williamson Act, or Agriculture Preserve and Williamson Act Contract 390 for 280 acres based on the findings included therein as amended.
Still moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
The second, I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
That was a motion by Commissioner Wooster, and a second by Commissioner Ladish.
Thank you.
And Gina, you're up again for Item 3, 2022-030, zoning amendment for modification of existing agricultural preserve and Williamson Act Contract 333 for Dave Cassick and Libby Raider. Cassick?
Yes. So before I begin, just for disclosure, Libby is my cousin. Not an issue here, but stated for the record. So yes, this is zoning amendment 2022-030 for David Cassick and Libby Raider Cassick. Again, this comes to us as a result of California Land Conservation Contract Application to amend the existing Contract 333. This is to include a 75.32-acre parcel to the existing 363.17-acre preserve. The parcel is located at 4804 Pool Station Road in San Andres, approximately five miles south of the State Route 49 and Pool Station Road intersection in San Andres. The Cassicks have been leasing this land from the, from the neighbor for 28 years. They have been utilizing this land for grazing their goats as well as their cattle. Their gross annual income from production is reported as $6,900. Again, a feasibility study was conducted indicating the land can produce a gross annual income of $29.70 per acre annually. Both of those exceed the minimum $2,000 base requirement for the preserve. Being that the parcel is greater than 75 acres, and combined with the land already in Contract 333, for a total of 489.49 acres, the proposal meets the minimum 100-acre for the Williamson Act contract and 50 acres for the ag preserve zone. So again, in conclusion, staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the goals and policies of the County General Plan. Additionally, the California Land Conservation Contract Application and zoning amendment meet the minimum requirements set forth in Board of Supervisors Resolution 7549, as well as Chapter 17.18 of the County Zoning Code. Any questions?
So on that resolution, you'll also be putting in about meeting the 50-acre minimum?
Yes.
Is there any member of the public or the applicant who would like to speak to us Online or in person?
No online public comment.
Thank you. So we will open and close the public comment portion of this hearing also. We're feeling a little left out today, like no one's interested.
It's okay.
Unexciting.
Kelly, is there something you'd like to say?
Well, just on the resolution.
Okay. So unless any member of the commission has another comment, we'll talk about the resolution? Okay.
Looking at the revised version of the resolution, the second whereas clause, if I'm reading this right, the last line of the second whereas clause reads, in a portion of Sections 04 and 054.
Oh, no. The 4, the 4 doesn't delete until I accept the track changes. I know, it looks funny. So the...
The strikeout is the line of the 4, and so it's, you can't see it.
Yeah, so it's, when I accept the track change, I know, I noticed that too. When I accept the track changes, the 4 will go away. So Kelly's noting that I had referenced, actually, I caught it, I have to tell you that I caught the mistake.
I didn't catch it.
I wish I had caught it before I made it, but it used to read Sections 04 and 04. And so obviously, I went back and it's Sections 04 and 05, so I made that correction.
Any other comments on the resolution before we hear the recommendation?
We're ready for... Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve Resolution 2022-011, recommending the Board of Supervisors adopt an ordinance amending the zoning of APN 52-001-036 from General Agriculture A1 to Agriculture Preserve AP for David Cassick and Libby Raider Cassick, upon approval to amend, to amend agriculture preserve and Williamson Act Contract 333 for a total of 438.49 acres based on the findings included therein as amended.
Still moved.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. So the motion passes 5-0 with Commissioner Wooster making the motion, then Commissioner Ladish seconding again. And this is the opportunity to hear from the commissioners if they have any reports they would like to share.
I'm here. That was easy.
I have nothing to say. Does our planning director have anything he'd like to share?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, the, you might be wondering what happened to the GHD reduction plan we've been working on previously over the past couple of months? So it is coming back at the meeting of October 27. So that's, that's the latest information, and it's going to include all the comments made by the commissioners, as well as results of the poll that was sent out and that kind of, you know, responses. We had over 70 responses to that poll, so that should be very interesting. The second thing is the Oak Woodlands, Oak Woodlands Ordinance is going to be coming to the Planning Commission after it goes to the Hardwood Committee on September 29. So after September 29, I'll figure out which, our Planning Commission date might be the second meeting in October, we have the Oak Woodlands Ordinance come before the Planning Commission.
It might be best not to have both that and the GHD.
Oh, absolutely not, yes. Yeah, I could imagine the time. The time it would take with the GHD would probably several hours in the morning, so...
And I'm just wondering if we're gonna see a dark sky ordinance coming our way, 'cause I have the broken record on this one.
It is on my list.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Then we are adjourned at, whatever the order is, 9:50.
Back at you.
Thank you, everybody.
Hey, you better keep that, that's a stress.